The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Teacher, the salary of $64,829 to coordinator of literacy intervention, 12 months at the district office at a salary of $73,433. Effective August 4th, has presented be approved.
Thank you ma'am.
Any comments, questions? Sandy, Molly?
Aye.
Warren, five, Dorf?
Aye.
Jeffrey? Becker?
Aye.
Blacka?
Aye.
Waighner?
Aye.
Carrie, six, zero, and James U. Oh, she is.
Yeah, she is.
So it's a very good move. We stole Jane away from another district a number of years ago. An expert in literacy and top-notch, top flight all the way, so it's a good move.
But she will be missed anyhow. She's smiling because she can do the damn thing. See, doing it gets very happy. Five, you've got the scent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Blacka?
Aye.
Waighner?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carrie, six, zero. I would entertain a motion for adjournment if necessary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will adjourn and restart our regular work session meeting at 5:30. All six board, sorry, seven, all seven board members are present at the table tonight. We are also joined by, to my left, by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, Sandy Heller, our board assistant, members of the cabinet, and Lulie Martinez-Cruz, who is our Intercity Student Council President from East High School. First, we start with our public forum, which is a time for members of the community to speak before the board about anything of concern to them. I have no forums filled out, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board? Seeing none, we will move to, looking at the, our recognition.
And it's just part of the forum.
Oh, okay, let me see it on here, just wanted to make sure. Next, we have a great recognition. We have members of the Southwest Girls Soccer Team, placed second at state, and I'm going to ask, coached by Tyler Thomas, and I think you brought another coach or two with you, which I'll let you, okay, I'll let you introduce everyone when you come up here, but first, I'd like to have Mike Blacka read the recognition that will be given to you.
Yes, it's with great pride that I read this. In recognition of the Southwest High School Girls Soccer Team for achieving second place in the WIAA State Soccer Tournament dated August 3rd, 2015, and signed by Michelle Langenfeld, superintendent, and Brenda Warren, school board president. Come on up. Everybody, everyone.
Everybody, come on up.
Everyone, ladies, everyone up.
Everybody.
Everybody.
This is televised, so keep them up.
Congratulations, what a great season. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Tyler.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give them the mic. All right, we'll let you introduce who you've got with you.
All right.
Say a few words if you'd like also, or anyone else would like to reflect on the season or anything, I would love to hear your comments too.
All right.
Is it on? Is it on?
All right, so my name is Tyler Thomas. I was the head coach of the girls soccer team. I also have with me my two great assistants. The taller guy is Jay Dravies and the shorter of the two is Jason Mua. So Jason worked a lot with both the JV and the Varsity Program this year, and most specifically with our goalkeeper, Tony Champion, who is right here, and then Jay worked with me exclusively, mostly with the varsity throughout the season. The players that I have that are here with us, I have Montana Thomas, number five, who was a junior this past season, Caitlin Shermans, number two, who is also a junior, Tony Champion, our goalkeeper, number 26, who is a junior, Amber Noel, number 24, oh, yeah, 24?
Yes.
You can't see her right now, that was a sophomore this past season, and we have our two freshman twins, number 16 and number 17, Elizabeth and Alexis Cumber. Number 19 was also a freshman, Gracie Corbett. Number three, Paige Pierce, who's a junior this season, Maddie Baucher, our lone senior up here from this past season, number 13, Bree Bizdaka, number seven, who was a sophomore this past season, Emily Berg, number 20, who was also a sophomore, and Ashley Zamanik, who was a sophomore this year. So that was probably one of the most... So if we wanted to reflect on the season, like you guys said, one of the biggest reasons I like to say the girls grades is because so many of them are coming back and they have a lot of seasons ahead of them in the Southwest Soccer Program. We are a very young team. Maddie's the one senior up here. We also had two other seniors on the team, but one of the reasons why I think our team maybe surprised some people is we did struggle a little bit in the beginning of the season, having graduated 10 girls from the year before, and it was basically a whole new team coming into it, but I give the girls a lot of credit. They believed in the message that I was delivering throughout the entire season. They worked hard throughout the entire season and continue to improve each week, even though the results necessarily weren't always there and we didn't always come out victorious in the beginning of the season, even toward the latter part of the regular season. They kept believing and when we got to the state tournament, they defeated Kekana, then they defeated Manasha, then they defeated Ashkosh North, and then they beat Pawaki in a shootout, and then we went down to the state tournament and played Rhinelander in the semifinal, beating them 1-0, and then we played a real competitive team in Oregon, who has four players that are going on to play Division One college soccer next year alone, not to mention some of their underclassmen that are being recruited as well and were undefeated, and we held them scoreless in the first half and we were tied and had a couple opportunities, just didn't get the ball to bounce our way in the second half. But I was very proud of all the girls. Like I said, it was a true, as a coach, I've been coaching soccer since I was 18, and I know I don't look that old, I'm 28 now, so it's been 10, it's been 10 years now, and I've never had a group of kids that I had the opportunity to coach that really formed one cohesive unit and a great team, and I can tell the girls always liked hanging out with one another. They enjoyed coming to practice to see each other every single day, and nobody ever got down on each other when we faced some adversity. They always stuck together, so one thing to be really proud of as a coach, to have a group of kids that really buy into each other, so I know...
Some of the girls like to say something. Anybody? Come on. You're on TV.
Uh, yeah, well, I've been playing soccer for like a long time, and I definitely would say that not a lot of people expected us to go this far. Like, like Thomas said, we're pretty young and like, we're coming in with a whole new team. How many seniors did you graduate last year? We graduated 10 seniors last year, so us like coming back players were kind of like iffy about a lot of stuff, and a lot of other people were iffy about us even winning the first game, so it was definitely like cool to be able to even make it to the state tournament, let alone to the championship game. So, I don't know, it was definitely an experience that I'll remember for the rest of my life.
Anybody else?
What made the difference? Obviously, you were not predicted or, you know, the people wouldn't think that you would be the leading team in the cause fire. What made the difference?
I think wanting it. I think wanting it as bad as we did made the difference. Like, we, in the beginning, it was always like, people didn't want to play us because they didn't think it was worth their time to play us, and they didn't think it would further them any, to play us, and I think that just threw wood on the fire and just made us want to go and get and prove everyone wrong, and I think... Um, I think, oh, you guys are like the best people I know. I'm really emotional, just give me a second. Um, the first practice, I think, was when I realized that we were going to do it. We could do it, because I saw everyone that came and wanted to be there. You guys, you're going to do it next year, and I wish you all the best.
And I think too, to second what Maddie said about the team coming together, and there's something about knowing that it could be your last game as well. Now, some teams can get nervous and then crumble underneath pressure, but the ladies stepped up every single game, and it was, well, the unique part was, it wasn't like we just rode the back of a great performance by one individual. Every single game, somebody else stepped up. Like, I remember Amber having the most magnificent goal I've ever seen in the state semifinal game against Rhinelander, a beautiful left-footed shot off of a volley right to the top corner of the net. Tony had a fantastic performance against Pawaki, having 13 saves and making three saves in the penalty shootout and scoring one of the goals in the penalty shootout as well. So it was always somebody different every single night. I mean, if I go think back to the game against Kekana, we got a goal from Montana here to win the game right before the end of the second half, like literally seconds before the first half was done, Montana scored another left-footed shot. Then we went against Manasha, and Caitlin had an excellent game against Manasha, scoring a goal, having assists, setting up Alexis, number 17, to get us off, off and running right away. Ashkosh North, Paige had a big game against Ashkosh North, scored two goals against Ashkosh North, and Caitlin had another, so it was somebody different every single night that was stepping up and scoring, and I know Coach Jay's favorite part of the equation was how well the defense played at the end of the season. Coach Jay had been working almost exclusively with the defense throughout the entire season, and that unit really came together throughout the season. You know, a couple of the members of our defense, Gracie played center back for us, and Emily Berg played right back. The other ones weren't able to make it, number 20, so they really stepped up and played really well as a unit.
Congratulations.
We do your coach when you play for these teams.
Do you want a picture, Lori? Come on, Coach. How happy is that? A lot of hard work.
Congratulations.
Jason Roy is the dorm monitor at West. He's a dorm monitor, he's awesome. The coach, Jason Roy, at West, he's awesome. He's awesome.
All right, um, next we have our teaching and learning work sessions facilitated by Katie Molly.
Actually, we have no discussion items.
No items.
At this time, so that concludes our portion of the work session.
How'd you do that?
I have a question.
How'd you do that? No questions from you, be quiet.
All right, thank you, Katie. We'll move on then to organizational support work sessions, which will be facilitated by Andrew Budget.
All right, so we have, we have discussion items. We have one under business and finance, the policy 852 and rule, distribution of non-school materials policy. We'll introduce that.
Kim Paulo and I are here tonight on the policy and rule 852, distribution of non-school materials, and as the adoption considerations indicate, this is really the companion policy to the policy we brought last month, which was the sales and solicitation on district property. This policy pertains to outside organizations who want to distribute their materials on school premises and through our schools. We currently have practice in the district, and the distribution of those materials largely goes through Kim's office with the assistance of Linda Blahoviak for distribution of non-school related materials in our buildings. The policy and rule really just codifies what we've been doing over many years and puts that in, on paper and provides the transparency to our third-party community members who want to distribute their materials through our schools.
Questions? Mike?
Read this very closely. I want to make sure, and I'm sure it probably does, but where in this policy would we cover a request from School Choice Wisconsin to distribute voucher information, or Notre Dame Academy, or Grace?
Well, I wouldn't say, the policy and rule are written in a viewpoint neutral because we have to be viewpoint neutral in order for our policy to be constitutional and because we're creating a limited public forum and distributing the material, so we really need to be viewpoint neutral. But if you look in rule, I'm sorry, policy 852B, the following shall not be permitted or distributed in accordance with the policy, then if you flip to the second page, number two would be material that contradicts the district's missions or beliefs or is in conflict with board policy, and then four, material that recruits current students to attend or participate in a non-school related program activity or event that occurs during the regular school hours or during the school year, and then six, material that if distributed to students would substantially distribute, I'm sorry, disrupt or materially interfere with the proper and orderly operation of the school or a school-sponsored activity.
Okay, so you're confident that that will cover that, because I mean, very likely we could get those types of requests.
We would have to weigh each request on its own and look at what materials are asking us to distribute through our schools, so I'm not going to say that we would say no to, just because of the group that is asking us to distribute, we'd have to look at the content of the materials.
Obviously, that content would be detrimental to our school district.
I could think of a scenario where they, where any group would want us to distribute material for an event that wouldn't be disruptive by...
Right.
So again, we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
Solcine?
Thanks. I have a few questions. First, you know, I tried to save my document, but it didn't save, but I can't find it now. Anyway, my comments on it, so I'm going to wing it. This was not clear to me. The, basically, under the first paragraph on 852...
Do you want to toss your rule?
I'm on the rule.
Oh.
Okay. 852 Board Policy Manual. No, I'm not there.
You're in the policy.
I'm in the policy, sorry. That's R as the rule.
The first one.
Yeah, first page, A1. Okay, so it says, "The superintendent of schools and learning or his or her designee may approve a proposed posting for distribution that relates to a community program activity for school-aged children that is primarily charitable in nature, but sponsored or underwritten by a for-profit individual entity, provided that in the judgment of the superintendent of schools and learning or his or her designee, that the program activity is not most reasonably construed as an effort to advertise the actual service activity or product that is offered for profit."
Mm-hmm. I can give you an example.
Yeah.
Okay. We have banks, car dealerships that put on kid events on the weekends, carnivals, bounce houses, free events for kids to come to. They may be a safety event where they're coordinating with the community for fingerprinting or identity theft issues, and they want to distribute those materials. They're not selling anything. It's underwritten and sponsored by those organizations, but it meets all the other criteria here in the policy.
Okay.
During the holidays, a lot of for-profit organizations will underwrite various different activities, fall carnivals, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I think the thing that tripped me up was primarily charitable in nature, and I was unclear as to, as to the direction of the charity. Like, so is, is the entity, the for-profit entity trying to find, trying to do charity to the child individually, or is it something like you said, a free event? So that, the charitable in nature tripped me up a little bit. But you're confident that it means what you say with the words that are there?
That's how, so, that's how it's played out. I think the benefit of the policy and rule coming in the manner that it has is that we have had plenty of experience in almost every sort of request, that we are able to articulate a policy that is viewpoint neutral and constitutional, and a way to meet the needs of our community partners and provide opportunities for our kids in the community.
Okay, then, my other question was, I think on the rule. Let me close that and go back. Yep. The rule. Just bear with me, sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the, the adoption consideration. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Basically, okay, I'm just going to say what it is. I'm not going to be able to point to the, the place because I don't want to take up everybody's time. Why didn't you have a process where the principal approved of the request first, and then it was sent down here for your office? It seems to me that, you know, we want principals to have a more managerial role, and it would seem to me that it would behoove that role if the principal first approved it. Yes, this is appropriate for my school community. This is appropriate given what educational things and outside activities are going on at this school. My first level, yep, fine, now I can go downtown. Why not?
I want you to answer that, because I think, this did come up and we talked about it, and...
Well, I think, I mean, I think first of all, it's just the management of the quantity that we receive, and then trying to be consistent in how we apply the policy now and then that practice. So you've got one person who has a lot of experience doing this for a number of years, who's able to look at these as they come through. I think the other is, from a community perspective, for them to be able to know where to go to get it into the schools with one entry point versus 40 entry points is helpful to the community. We've talked about how do we make sure that we're able to put this information now that we have it? Actually, we've, Melissa sent an email today. Where are we going to put it so that our partners and our community knows what this is and how it all works and what the process is, so it's centrally located? But I think the piece is just trying to get it in one entry spot, like we have been working with many of our other pieces, like the grants and other community partnerships, so that we're able to look at it from a district lens as well as then say, this passes our lens, now here it is for your building.
I can offer a historical perspective on that, because at one time, it was like that, and I'm thinking back to when Bob Rukie was, was working here, and the elementary principals at the time brought the request to him that these things come centrally, because we were being inundated in the buildings, and that's kind of where it started, and then Linda Blahoviak was the, was the central clearinghouse for it all, and it really made a big difference in terms of alleviating a lot of the stuff that was coming through our door. It reduced it dramatically when, when people had to come downtown. They, for whatever reason, didn't feel as comfortable, or maybe they felt more comfortable just showing it up on our doorstep at the school, but for whatever reason, it worked out much better that way.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing. In drafting this, in working with Linda, who has the most experience, she echoed exactly what Mr. Dorf said. It started in the buildings. The principals asked for it to come down, because it was such a large part of their case.
Okay.
And I would, I would think from a consistency perspective as well. So one building sends it out, one building doesn't. I mean, I think there was probably, you know, that lens of, you know, this isn't important to me, but it's important to me, so then, you know, the community feedback will be, well, they sent it out, but they didn't send it out.
Okay.
So I think it provides that as well.
Two more questions. So I think this is back on the rule. Why is it that we are not, why is it that neutrality does not help, does not allow us to basically outline an educational purpose? And so I go back to that Advance America coloring contest thing. Coloring contest, from where I sit, does not have an educational purpose. Advance America is a problematic institution, problematic. Say, I'll probably get some emails, but it is problematic in our community. So why is it that we can't better outline that something coming from a community partner needs to have some kind of educational purpose? Although I do notice that it says it has to meet board policy and the, in the policy that we just talked about, but there was something in the rule that sort of made me think, well, why can't we just say it needs to have an educational purpose?
I think if you look on, on the policy, 852A, and again, it has to meet all the criteria in A in order to be distributed. Two says that the material must promote educational or recreational programs, events, or activities serving public age school children.
Okay, so, okay.
So I, I think that is that...
That covers it.
Okay.
Okay, all right. The other question I had too was, and like I said, I had it marked, but I can't find that document now. There is something about if going over the loudspeaker would be beneficial for the distribution, that that would be, I didn't understand that. Why would we let anybody who is not a school personnel or a student on the loudspeaker? I didn't get that.
I don't have that highlighted, so just let me find that in here.
Okay.
Is it in the rule?
I think, it's in the rule, I think.
The practice, just so you know, the practice that, that I discuss with our activity directors and our administrators is that what goes over the announcements should be a direct reflection of what we're doing as a school or a district.
Right.
Because we could be on the announcements for 15 minutes in the morning, you know, talking about how many points somebody scored at a basketball game that's not school-related or, you know, advertising the things that are in the community. So we really try to have one board, you know, in our, in our schools where people can put their announcements up, and we don't do those announcements over the loudspeaker. That's the, the information that they've been given from both, you know, myself and, you know, when we talk with the activity directors and the principals.
I found it, Solcine, is G on the last page of the rule, two. I think short of outright prohibition on making those announcements, we did leave a little discretion in here for the buildings to make that determination. I think the wording is, is pretty clear that the announcements are not open public forum for, for those materials.
Where is, where are you looking?
Rule two.
Yeah.
Three G.
Maybe the practical example I can think of is...
It's three G, right?
For those of you that have been principals, you know, like that eighth hour, last minute announcement that you forgot to get in, you know, or you, there was something that came in last minute that you felt like was timely and appropriate. That might be an example of when something where it's just a message to people before they leave or...
Or we may have an, an example where we have students that are participating in an activity that was advertised, and it gets canceled because of the weather, and we want to make sure that they don't go there, for example.
So I get like the Girl Scouts, right? I, I get that. I get, you know, lots of act, I don't know, it seemed to me that is just a little broad. I, I mean, I understand that there's lots of verbiage that kind of outlines that, but when I saw that, I, I was a little surprised.
And I think, I think the piece is, we have to be careful that we don't do something for the Girl Scouts that we don't do for another organization too, so, which is why I think that we talk about trying to make sure in the buildings that we're being consistent and just not doing those announcements. So it, it could be something that's housed at our school, you know, that they've gone through the proper format to get something in our building through facilities, and we may need to do a quick announcement for them because it involves the kids who are actually present in the building. So I think it's just a way to capture saying, if something comes up, we can use our discretion, discretion to use that loudspeaker.
All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions? Brendan?
There's, in the very beginning of the rule, there's, A and B are almost identical, I think, except for one is requesting non-school materials within a single school building and one through more than one school or on a district-wide basis. So is the designee for each of those going to be different? Is that why they're separate? Or why, why are they separate? It just, 'cause when I read it, my first thought was, oh, I guess maybe the principal will make the decision on a single school, and then somebody downtown will make it if it's more than one school. But you're saying that it's the same person for both those situations. So I'm just wondering why we don't just group that together and make it very clear that any request, whether it's one school or forty, has to go through this designee who, right now, is Linda.
We can do that, I think the piece is that sometimes when Linda processes it, processes it, and we approve it, it still may not go out in the building. A principal may say, you know, you missed my deadline, or, so, I think we can put them together for this, but I just don't want people to think that just because we approve it at our level, it always necessarily gets put out at a building level. So I think we were trying to delineate the difference between building and district that there is sometimes. Or we may have something that we approve at the district level that does not go out in the buildings, it comes out at a district level through a different venue and maybe Lori's staff scoop.
Can we include a statement like that?
Sure.
I mean, to me, if I were reading that policy, I would wanna know that, that there is, I mean, are you saying that the school still has, if it's approved at the district level, the school still has latitude to disperse it or not?
Some do Tuesday envelopes, some have different deadlines for information that they send out. So we can't guarantee that if we approve it at our level, that it's necessarily going to make communication at the building.
So that, I guess I would, if I were an outside person reading this policy, would wanna know that, because otherwise I assume that every school is going to disperse it.
And Linda does a nice job of telling them that, but I think we could...
Yeah.
Was this an attempt, maybe A and B, to delineate between where there is an option and where the district is saying, we do want all of this to go out?
I think it really was to point out to our community partners, whether it's one school or multiple schools, it starts here. And we just did it in two different bullet points so that it would be clear, here's what happens for one school, here's what happens for more than one school, but we can combine them.
All right. Other questions?
I had a situation, and I'm not sure whether it fit under this policy or whether it should fit under this policy or someplace else. And I don't remember all the details with it, so I give it to you generally. I had materials of a political nature arrive and serve in bulk and say, give it to all staff, right? And I was of the opinion that we don't hand out political things in school, so I just pitched it, all right? Now, it came back to me that I couldn't legally do that, I had to just return it and mail back to its source. Now, is something like that covered in this policy? Should it be, or should it be covered someplace else? Or at least let people be aware of something like that, that you can't just throw it out, you could send it back.
The process for distributing materials should be giving a copy to Linda or whoever the designee is, and then a determination is made on that copy as to whether materials can be distributed. Once it's approved, then the material should go to the school. So I think we could probably include something in here that if materials are dropped off at the school, we do, I can think of an example, we had samples dropped off at schools, samples of food items that did not go through the policy, and we had them brought downtown and we took care of them here. So we could include something like that.
Okay, I mean, you understand what my question is about political material? And this was for staff, not for students.
There's no obligation, is there? People drop things off to distribute to staff that have nothing to do with the educational programming, that you would be required to send it back?
I'm thinking...
This came through the mail, pointing clarification.
Through the mail, like, I'm guessing, I'm gonna guess that that came, I think his circumstance is a little...
Is a little unique. Oh, yeah, because if it's something that, right, that is, comes through the mail, and you don't like, do return to sender, right? Interesting, interesting. Especially since you're the mail point at the school. Yeah.
I just don't know if principals would know that.
Yeah, I don't think that's the intent of this policy. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's what...
Well, you may wanna check on it, I mean, maybe, what I was told back then wasn't correct, but, yeah, anyway.
Okay.
My worry with that would be the volume that we get, and I don't know, not being in the position I'm in, I would ever have imagined the volume that we get. I don't know how we could send stuff back even. It would be, it would be very difficult.
We get a lot of junk mail, a lot of solicitations for various different things, that it would be impossible to send all those back. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, then the next item that I'll introduce under Human Resources is the pharmacy benefits proposed recommendation as presented.
That I can't. We are proposing to make a change to our pharmacy benefits that will affect approximately one hundred and twenty-nine employees, and it is to require that a generic medication be used over a brand. If the employee chooses to take the brand medication, they would pay the difference between the cost of the generic, pay the copay of the brand, plus the differential between the cost of the generic and the brand medication. The reason for this change is that when we were, when we started a step therapy, which means you'd have to start with the generic first, and then you could step up to the brand, we didn't have a lot of generics on the market. Now there are many generics on the market and for the most common ailments. So our, the pharmacist who oversees Wisconsin RX, excuse me, their National Cooperative RX, working with them through insurance recommends this change to save money. And as you can see, it's, could save two hundred and thirty thousand dollars annually. We think that there are some of the employees who don't even realize that they're on a brand medication, that they may have been on that medication for some time, and that if they knew they could switch to a generic thereby saving the district and their own copay, they might save themselves some money that they might switch. We have not talked yet with all of the unions, because this change doesn't have to be made until, we're recommending the first of the year if it will be made. And so we could take your questions, get back to you, bring this back in September, and then that would be when the vote could be made. So we would use the next month or so to talk with the unions. I've already spoken with Dave at the GBEA about it. Do you have any questions that we didn't cover? I could, I could, you did get a copy of the brand versus generic. We asked Wayne Salavera from National RX to take us through one common medication, this one happens to be Lovasa, a lipid-regulating medication. And you can see the difference between the two medications, the Lovasa, which is the brand, and the Omega 3, which is the generic. You can see the difference in the costs, the total cost, it's quite substantial, the total amount paid by the member, the employee or their family, and the way the plan pays. So both, the copay would be reduced for the employee from fifty dollars to ten dollars, and then the cost of the district.
Okay. Jean, what if there is a dispute over the effectiveness of the generic?
We would put in place a review, and it would be reviewed by CVS Caremark, the National Cooperative, RX. They would require the physician to document why the brand work, or why the generic did not work, and that would be reviewed. Now, this would only, these would only, this would only be required if there are at least three generics with three different manufacturers in the market. And that's so that, I believe, what I was told, is that so that the physician can go to another generic if they need to, because sometimes a generic does have different ingredients in the medication, like a different coating on it. One might have a dye in it that doesn't, that adversely affects the patient. Sometimes the mixture is, has gluten in it. Now, he said, the pharmacist said they're going away from gluten, but some might have that, that could cause some GI upset.
So I assume if your physician insists on the brand saying that for you, the generic is not suitable, you would certainly...
You prob, no, if you, if the physician writes a prescription for the brand, the pharmacist will be telling them that the generic is what's covered, and they would dispense, they would dispense the generic, correct? They would just, now, if the family, if the patient or the physician insists on the brand, they would pay the difference. They could go to review, and in the meantime...
Yeah, they can, they can make the recommendation an appeal, basically, and if it is upheld by National Co-op, they would review it. And if it's deemed that it is necessary for them to have the brand, they would get the brand, and there wouldn't be a penalty. If there's no reason that they can see, then they would face the penalty for it. The penalty being the difference between the costs.
Michelle?
So who decides? So the prescription comes to the pharmacist, and the pharmacist looks at it and says, your insurance doesn't cover it, I'm giving you a generic, is that how that would work then?
Well, they would say that the insurance doesn't cover the cost of the brand.
Correct.
The generic is what we would give to you. And I don't know if they call the physician back.
If the physician says it has to be dispensed as written, that's where they need the medical proof behind it. It would go to Wisconsin RX for review by the board if the person says they want the brand name.
But what if they need it like that day? I mean, there's not, and there's not time for this whole review process. And the physician says, you need to start taking this name-brand drug as soon as you get home, there is no time for a review.
Well, rather, how long does a review take, and what out-of-pocket is that person facing?
We'll get an answer to that question. And we, I'm not certain if they dispense the brand and charge the patient, or if they dispense the generic, or if they call the doctor right there and try to get a response.
I believe they call the doctor.
They call, I think they probably call the doctor and say, you need it.
Well, they call the doctor to say, do you realize that this person's paying out-of-pocket for this medication, and can we dispense the generic? And, you know, the doctor's gonna say yes or no, and if it's no, then they have to have legitimate reasons for why, and then they would go through the...
Right, then it goes through review, yeah.
Katie?
Is the expectation then that the pharmacy will have, if there are three or four different versions of the generic, that all of those will be available? To the, 'cause I remember I ordered my mom's meds, and it was the generic de jour, depending on...
Yeah, I don't think it, no, I don't believe that that would be required, that the pharmacist, that, you know, for example, if you're going to a local pharmacy, that they'd have all three. But the doctor would have the choice to go to a different prescription if it was, if the one that they filled was not tolerated. So there has to be, in order for this to be in place for these medications, there has to be the three different brands available to, so that the doctor can switch if necessary. It would not, I don't believe that the pharmacist would necessarily have to carry all three.
They'd have to have access to them and get them to fill the prescription as written.
And I think that's because, I guess, just to assure that there is some backup for the patient if they can't tolerate one brand. And what Wayne Salavera from CVS Caremark National Co-op said, more and more medications are becoming available through a generic medication. And so the common, or the recommendation now is to require the generics as a cost savings for both the patient and the employers. Because, I mean, you can see, if you didn't know, when you look at this medication, if you were taking this medication and you knew that every month, you know, this is, this is a ninety-day mail order supply, but every ninety days you were paying forty dollars more out of your pocket, you would probably say, let me try the generic and see if it works. Because that's, that's a lot of money, and this is only one medication.
I thought I heard a comment, maybe, maybe I misheard, that they have to pay for the generic, the difference, that was referred to as a penalty. And in my opinion, that's not a penalty by any means, we're not penalizing anybody. If they truly need generic, not generically the name-brand, they can still get it, it's a matter of what we choose to be able to afford here as a district. Pay for it forward, or if they want a cowback, because that gives them more peace of mind, so that's their choice, but that's not a penalty.
But this would enable people to work it into their flex money and things like that? Just curious why we would pay two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-one cents towards the generic, but only two ten fifty-one towards the name-brand? Under the last column in the bottom section?
Is your question, why not cover the same amount?
Right, right.
That's where the difference is between the actual cost of the two. So that's where you'd pay not only the difference in the copay, but also the cost of the actual drug, the difference in between the costs.
Are you saying that it doesn't add up?
Well, I'm just saying that if we're willing to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for the generic, why wouldn't we pay?
This is just one example. There's somewhere that the dollar amounts are, there's a very large difference.
Hugely different, okay.
Yeah, but that seems like it's...
Well, that's a penalty. I mean, to say that we will actually pay less, you know, to say that we would pay it the same, I have, is on my other list of questions, but to say we will actually pay less, that's a penalty. I mean, it's a forty-dollar penalty.
Right, it just seems a little...
I see what you're saying.
You know, it seems if we're willing to pay two hundred and fifty towards the generic, why wouldn't we pay two fifty towards the...
We can check with him.
Yeah, just kind of, it just seems a little harsh.
And, yeah, why wouldn't we pay more for the generic? That actually doesn't even make any sense.
Well, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be paying, yeah, if, well, yeah, if, because the employee or their family member picks up the larger portion.
Yeah, but still, I mean, that means...
But I just look at that last column, the amount paid by the...
I see what you're saying, it's forty dollars.
The amount paid by the plan.
Yeah, forty dollars more, why would we?
I think paying the different, the cost, paying the cost differential seems like it would be, you know, the generic copay plus the full differential, I don't see why you need to go another forty on top of that, that seems a little excessive. Although it's one of the smallest concerns on my list. But anyone else for...
No, not on this list.
Okay, so, so this was, this was a pretty, pretty safe example, I guess, that was, that was presented. The drug, the efficacy on the triglyceride levels was only about a three percent difference, it was a three percent superiority to the brand, but, you know, three percent, a few points on the triglyceride level is not that big of a deal. My concern would be more, what about, what about drugs where there's a more, a more pressing urgency? Or where there's less, you know, less tolerance in what's safe and acceptable? The FDA allows a certain amounts of variance, a drug can be, actually have a blood concentration of, can actually be twenty percent less ten percent of the time and... percent of the time and still make the cut. For some drugs, that's not that big of a deal, and for some drugs, that could be significant. And I see, I see the, you know, this review process is not going to happen fast, and I would be interested in knowing how often an appeal is actually upheld. Because I have a, I have a feeling, my, my feeling is I think it would be very, very, very low. And you'll forgive my somewhat dim view of the industry, the components of the industry that evaluate insurance disputes. I don't, I think that they are, the ruling is almost always against the consumer. I also think it's very, more so than the, just the difference of the forty dollars, the fact that it's proposed that this wouldn't even go into the out-of-pocket maximum, that seems to really raise the stakes here. It's one thing to say that if someone is going with the brand, isn't gonna wait for the, isn't gonna wait, isn't going to or can't wait for the results of a, of a appeal, that the worst-case scenario is we fill, you fill your out-of-pocket max, that's one thing. But this could continue into many thousands of dollars. This isn't the most expensive drug by far on the list. And, you know, if we're saying that, if we're saying that forty dollars times four ninety-day copays is a lot of money, then certainly, you know, I don't, I don't like any expenses in a plan to be, to be uncapped if they are medically reasonable. I feel a little bit less concerned about the fact that there have to be three generics on the market. Do we have, does this proposal include an exception if they're out of stock of generics?
We'll ask that.
Okay, because that could be, that could be significant. People shouldn't have to wait for their medication if they're out of stock. I think there's certain, in my limited research, I know some plans have that feature. I'd also, I'd also be interested in knowing, now, we already, we already have a, it was a different process, but there's a process by which I would assume, you mentioned a hundred-and-twenty-nine people. Did some of these hundred-and-twenty-nine people go through the step-therapy process, and as a result of that are on the brand, or are you excluding all those people?
They have not shared with us the names of the people or anything about the medication that they're taking. I could check on that question, but I'm not sure that it would be something they share with me. I could ask if they've been through a step program. I mean, they're trying to protect the confidentiality, too, but...
Well, saying how many out of a hundred-and-twenty-nine are under an existing...
That they stepped through it.
You know, if, if some, if really, if any of these hundred-and-twenty-nine people already went through that process, and it was determined through step-therapy that brand was necessary, I would, it would be my hope that none of those people are in this number that would be sent back to generic, because they already went through it. That's a big concern of mine, if that number is even one. If the number is, in fact, zero, I'd be interested in knowing how many, how many cases there are that people are on a step-therapy exemption. And another question I would have is, are there, does this provider, are there any, are there any generics in which the, this list has a blanket exception? Any at all? Unless you already know that the answer's no. Are there any things where they say, "Okay, drug X, Y, Z is a very tight tolerance for safety or something, and although there's a generic, we don't make anyone do that"?
I don't believe so. If there's three, but again, there's got to be three different generics and three different manufacturers of it.
So I don't think there would, if, in the class of drugs that we're talking about, I don't think there, I will double-check, but I would assume there wouldn't be any drugs of that class where the brand is going to be the one that you would, must receive.
Okay, I'm just, again, I'm looking at situations where this FDA allowable variance in a, you know, potentially could affect safety. I'm talking about things with a very small margin of, margin of error. There's, seems to be some controversy about anti-seizure medications that have a very tight tolerance as to what's acceptable. And, again, I didn't go into a whole lot of detailed research, but there is, there is a lot of concern out there. Whether, you know, a cholesterol medication reduces by twenty-six percent or by twenty-nine percent is one thing, but those tolerances of safety are just a lot tighter on. And if we do, if we do go this route, I would like to, I'd like to at least have it evaluated if there should be some exceptions by type of drug or condition being treated and so So I think, you know, given that, I don't need to go on and on here, because there's, there is a little bit more, more time to work this out, but, you know, I also don't, I also don't want the justification for this to be, "Well, we're not preventing people from taking the brand, we're just not paying as much for it," because the reality is, for someone who, someone who earns hourly, hourly wages, five hundred dollars out-of-pocket does mean you can't get the drug. So I just want to make sure we don't go down that road, which the insurance industry has often said, "We don't deny you from taking anything." So that's, I guess that's my, my list of concerns I'll put out there, and look forward to hearing more about that next time. All right, other?
So then, we'll try to, we'll get the answers to these questions, and then, this will not be placed as a motion this month, but we'll talk about it again in the month of September, and if the board is willing, we'll move it to an action in September. We, in order to make a change for the first of the year, and to get the, the agreements and communication in place, we would need to know by the first of October.
Michelle?
Jean, how will you respond, so that everyone can hear the answers, if we're not going to bring it back for a couple of weeks? Are you going to send it out, the response to the board questions collectively?
Yes, I can do that. But for sure, by the, I think we could discuss the questions at the next work session in September, and then have the Q and A listed, so we could talk about it.
Do you want to, I guess, my question to the board is, do you want to wait that long, if, you know, because that's a month away, right?
It would be nice to get it before then, if staff can develop that before then.
Yeah, if you can get it, I'm not sure if you can.
If we can get it before then, send it through.
Well, we are, of course, we can get it, because we're paying a very high price to a third-party consultant whose job it is to do that, and has a, so I'm sure we can get it. And if we can't, if we can't get it from that third-party consultant, that's not on our Human Resources and Benefits Department, that's on our third-party consultant. This should be a, this should be a one-hour computer search, and I'm being generous, for that consultant that we've retained.
I had to respond now, but in terms of the group or the people reviewing these prescriptions, whether they should be generic or name, do they make money one way or another, if they say it should be generic, or they say it should be the name-brand? I'll just throw that question out.
The review, the group that reviews the medication as to, I mean, when the physician asks for it to be reviewed, do they...
Do they make money financially?
The reviewer.
Oh, my.
I'm sure they probably, I'm sure they probably, I'm sure they probably just get a fee for service. However, however, I would wonder, and this is probably not very well, this is probably pretty well concealed, I would wonder if a reviewer sides with the consumer a lot of the time, how often they continue to be called.
I would say the other side of that argument is the prescription industry, pharmaceutical industry. How much money they pump out there on marketing, how many giveaways they give to physicians and whatnot. So, you know, there's the other side of the coin, in my mind, and from my experience of seeing what some doctors get, and how readily they'll write a prescription for the name-brand, and I don't think they're all altruistic, or they feel that's the best one, other than they also buy into the advertising and the perks and conferences they get.
Well, actually, there's a report by ProPublica, that's out today, where you can basically look up your doctor to see how much money he or she has received from pharmaceutical companies.
And I don't, I don't dispute your point, Chris. There are certainly, on that other side of the coin, although some, I think there've been some curbs on what can be done, there's still, there's still plenty that happens on that side. But, again, I would think that a third-party reviewer, there should be some, even if, I'm not even saying fifty-fifty, but there should be some decisions going the way of the, if there aren't at least some decisions going the way of the consumer, some, that's kind of strange.
But, but the only, but really, the criteria is that, I should say, are that if this drug does not have three generics from each, from a different company, it does not qualify for this step down.
That's correct.
Right, because I know that there are some drugs that just, they're, there are no generics, right?
Right, well, and there are a number of drugs with no generic equivalent.
Yeah, okay.
Then you have drugs, they come out as a brand, the brand loses patent, and then the generics can come out, and there might only be one on the market.
Right.
And that one might not be exactly the same, so if the physician prescribes that, there's nowhere to go but back to brand.
Right.
And I think this is now, because now, and that used to be the case, but now we have more and more generics on the market, so there's options for the prescriber.
But I think Andrew's question is, is an apt one, to protect our employees, if they've already been through this, does the therapy, then we need to step down therapy, then we need to ensure that they're, we're not putting through this, because that's, you know, that's a nightmare. Yes, yes, I would agree. If they, if they have, if the doctor has already justified, and it's been approved that they get generic, the brand, then we wouldn't want them to put through that again.
All right, other questions? Okay, we'll, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
And then, finally, we have the Human Resources update.
I wanted to, when I, when I spoke to Dr. Wagner, he asked to provide an update, and about a month ago, or a year ago, we did, in mid-August, provide you an update of the openings that we have. For educators, we have sixty-two openings. Fifteen of those are in progress, though. We have candidates recommended, and we're in the process of either the background check or an offer being made, or pre-employment going on. Of those, of the sixty-two, nineteen are non-classroom teachers in our hard-to-fill areas, mostly bilingual, elementary, reading. Interventionists are becoming more difficult to fill. Some school psychs, business education, family consumer science, technology education, and library media. I looked back to the report that we provided, and that was August fourteenth, we had fifty-two openings a year ago. So it's about equivalent, we're ten more, but we're also about twelve days early, earlier than that. And then in new norer supervisors, we have nine openings. We have no-monitor openings right now, although we might have them as the, as people think about coming back to school and they decide that they're not going to return. Food service, right now, we have ten, clerical, six, paraprofessionals, thirty-one. We've added some parapositions, with one-to-ones coming forward, one-to-one students, and then maintenance, we have seven. But four of those are in the works, being recommended at some point in the recommendation process.
Right?
We're hiring, or, this is the season, we're hiring a lot.
Okay, any other questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Sixty-two, is that sixty-two at this point, or is that sixty-two that we've had going into the school year, we had sixty-two openings?
No, we have sixty-two openings right now of educators that haven't been filled.
Okay. And do you have that broken down, elementary, secondary, special ed, EOL?
We can, I don't have it with me. It's mostly these hard-to-fill positions, elementary, bilingual, reading, school psych, business ed, family consumer, technology education, and library media. Nineteen of these, of the sixty-two are non-classroom teacher positions, and we have fifteen positions in the works of those. So we have, if all fifteen come forward and are hired, then we're down to forty-seven.
The nineteen non-classroom teacher?
That would be, like, teaching, literacy interventionist, bilingual, instruction, school psych, business ed, the hard, more difficult to fill.
Business ed is a classroom position?
Oh, I, yeah, I see what you mean, but... And some of these won't be filled, like, for example, school psychs, we, every year we go in not filling all of our school psych positions. It's very tight. Sometimes with business ed, we don't fill all of our business ed positions.
All right, anything else?
Okay, then that concludes the Human Resources report.
All right, thank you, Andrew. We do have a, that concludes our work session, and we do have a closed session, so I'll read that motion.
May I ask something for next time? If possible, I should have thought this more. Be possible to have an update on our facilities, where they are with everything that's been done this summer?
Sure.
Yeah, as to what shape we're in for the start of the school year.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd like to point out now, and at that point in time, a lot of people don't realize the economic engine. We are in the community, not just our staff that we hire, but the amount of construction and things of that nature that we have going on, how they pump money back into our community.
I missed that last part, Chris.
We're an economic engine, and it's not just the teachers we hire, spend money, pump it into local economy, it's also type of remodeling, construction we have going on, and maintenance, it also pumps money into our community.
All right, I will read the closed-session motion. The closed session has been scheduled for Monday, August third, immediately following the adjournment of the work session meetings pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one-C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-point-eight-five-one-F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit, personnel matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So, who?
Second.
Sandy?
Hi.
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 Carrie Seven Zero, we'll move across the hall.